Cooking that down. It beats Walmart.
Oh, it's way too far away.
Didn't like to. Around himself, open house. They're at the manager. Boy, they had a lot of people sitting around there.
Yeah, I know.
All shining down.
Yeah, I came ready.
That the trucks will want to be. Pulling it out real quick.
Hey, how are you doing? No. No, got my food plots planted, but not, not any of the good stuff, hopefully this weekend. Just got a box of stuff I ordered and can't get around here and yeah. You know, it's still not even our frost.
See, that's what I was gonna ask too.
I think we're safe though. Fifteenth.
Fifteen, okay. Why do I say when the barns wells are my, my garden.
Turn your mics on, please. What's that?
Showed up yesterday.
I suppose to tap it.
Focused.
What'd you say?
I noticed them this weekend.
All right, it's seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call when you're ready. Barkle.
Here.
Loost.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
All right, everybody had a chance to go over the previous minutes. There's no changes or anything, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
So move Loost.
Second, Kettering.
All right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carried. Is there anything to be added to the agenda or changed about the agenda?
Yeah, Chris, I'd like to add something. I would like to add if we could have some discussion about solar farms and maybe look at our wind farm ordinances again. Or actually the solar farmers would be new. Just, there's been talk about solar farms in Clay County, you know? And so it got me thinking, got me looking and just thinking to be ahead of the ballgame.
Okay, we could add that at the end of the agenda here after the Platts. That's all right, everybody, I would need a motion to approve that change and the rest of the agenda.
I'll move, that Mike will move to approve.
Second, Loost.
All right, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carried. We can start with conflict of interest declarations with Kathy.
None. Lauren Nelson, none.
Chris Barkle, none.
Dan Kettering, none.
Clark, none.
Loost, none.
Dennis Michael, none.
All right, first agenda item scheduled for seven oh five, we've got a couple minutes.
Do you want to move, there are three Platts we can do right now if you'd like.
Okay.
The Heinz is connected to the CUP.
Okay, so we'll skip that one and start with PFJ. All right, PFJ plat, plat of track one metal luck addition in the southeast quarter, southwest quarter of section thirty-three. T ninety-five north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, near Lesterville.
Pretty straightforward, it's zoned ag, they own all the parcel around it. They're just cutting out twenty acres where there's a farmstead to possibly sell.
Okay, so that includes the whole building site and everything else.
But they have twenty acres.
Right, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Michael, a second by Nelson. Vote when you're ready. Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, the lead better plat, plat of lot thirteen, block five, Oak Hills addition, number two in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section thirteen. Township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, formerly known as lots one, two, and eleven, block five, Oak Hills addition, number two in the southeast quarter, southwest quarter of section thirteen. Township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, recorded in book S four, Platts on page six A containing point six acres more or less zip cuff, so.
Again, that's pretty straightforward, they own three lots, they wanted to put an accessory structure on a lot that didn't have anything on it, so they just combined all their lots into one, all their parcels into one lot.
So with all the parcels put together, then it's a conforming lot or not?
It was, let's see, no, it's not conforming, let's see.
Point six altogether, or is that?
Yeah, it's a point six, but they're, they were all non-conforming pre-existing lots to begin with, in Oak Hills. So they were all too small to begin with for moderate density, this makes it more conforming.
Okay, but still, because moderate density is one acre.
But they're closer.
Okay.
All contiguous?
Yep.
All right, well.
A bill of approval of the plat.
Motion by Kettering.
I'll second, Loost.
And I have a second. Vote when you're ready. Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, being seven oh six, should we just go back to our CUP or you want to finish up the plat?
Let's just do this one, this one's pretty cut and dry too.
Okay. Pecos plat, plat of track one of Pecos addition and lot two of southwest quarter of section eighteen, township ninety-four north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, containing twenty acres more or less zip cuff, north.
They own all of this, they just plotted out twenty acres for one of the family members, so it's conforming in ag.
Kyle wants to build a house.
I'm sorry?
Kyle wants to build a house.
I believe so, yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Loost, second.
All right, I have a motion in a second, we can vote when you're ready. Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right. Now we will jump back to the Heinz conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an accessory building in a moderate density residential district that exceeds maximum sidewall height of fourteen feet. Applicant wishes to build an accessory structure with sixteen foot sidewalls. Said property is legally described as plat of lots B forty-seven and B forty-eight of Farview Heights located in northeast quarter of the southeast quarter, section thirteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM. Yankton County, South Dakota, nine one one address is four three three eight four, South Dakota Highway fifty-two, Yankton, South Dakota. All right, is there anybody here wants to present this or Bill, you gonna go through it?
I just want to clarify one thing, so they own all three lots, this one, this one, and this one. In the CUP, they want to build a accessory structure on this, but there's no residence on it. So their plat is up next, they're combining these two lots into one. So that is part of the CUP, that was one of the conditions that the plat has to be approved.
What's that light area there in the?
I gotta zoom in a little bit here.
This one?
Right there.
Yeah.
So right there currently, if anybody's familiar with the area, that's kind of like a, I would call a non-permanent structure, more like a hoop type barn thing with a canvas roof on it, than that large object is obviously a boat.
Looks like a boat.
I think it might be. It's going in the water somewhere, right?
So I guess, I'm Jason Larson with Morton Buildings out of Sioux Falls, resident of the lake area, actually here in Yankton. The reason for this is they obviously have a need to try to get some things on a roof. I think it'll obviously complement the, you can see right into that lot as you drive by towards the lake area to the main campground. Right now, there's some different things kind of thrown about the yard. This will get everything enclosed and put for a much nicer cosmetic look to it as you're coming down the lake road. The reason that we're looking for the height is that boat, as you can tell, is not a John boat, it's pretty sizable. They need to have a fourteen foot tall door to be able to fit that in. And in order to fit that, we need at least a two foot taller sidewall to make that work.
And this is their residence down on the lower left?
Lower left, yep.
Yep.
And the three lots would be contiguous then, together?
The, the two lots are just gonna be combined, yep.
Okay, only two?
Yep.
The one to the east is someone else's?
That is theirs as well, but it's just not being combined. Basically looking to abandon that property line in between since there's no residence on that particular piece.
There's a residence on this piece.
Yep.
So we're leaving that one separate, so we don't have two residences on one lot.
Okay. And the view would be south.
So you'd see the.
Fifty-two, right?
Yep, so I don't want to touch your computer, Bill, but if you.
This is fifty-two, this is north, just north of fifty-two. This is.
Yep.
Campground.
Yeah, the entrance to Midway, is that right here?
Yep, entrance to Midway is right there.
So anyone north of that would be elevated.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, so the extra two feet in terms of the disturbance of somebody's view is not going to be a factor. The houses behind to the north are quite a bit higher.
I was just looking at the, the overall height of that structure.
Yep. Yep. So the overall height on that, let me calculate out.
I scaled it at twenty-two feet, but.
That sounds probably fairly close, let me just double check here.
Yeah, it probably does here. They didn't.
They didn't say, they didn't show them.
I have a program that'll scale it, so I was probably within a few inches.
I didn't see when that showed the.
And I didn't, I didn't see an elevation to the top of the ridge there, I was looking for it, so I ended up scaling it.
Be about twenty-three and a half.
Okay, I was off sex.
Yep, yep, pretty damn close.
Go, go back to the, the map. And where did you say the entrance to Midway was? Right there.
There's their house and there's Midway. So this right here, this all goes up.
What's, what's the road across from Midway then?
Lewis and Clark Trail.
Clark Trail.
Can you zoom out just a little bit? There you go. And the, the reason you're combining the two lots is because there has to be a primary use on there before you can have a secondary use, correct?
Correct, correct.
I, I think where that, I used to live, I think just right up north of that, where that Lewis and Clark is. And I, I think it is a pretty high.
Yeah, my, my.
Hill behind it.
Yeah, my, my grandparents actually lived right on this weird shaped one right here. I would say probably from there to there's gotta be at least an eighty to eighty foot, hundred foot elevation change.
Which makes sense and it makes it more, you know, aesthetically appealing to, to have that tall of a structure, I guess, there. I, I just didn't know the intent of that ordinance of fourteen foot sidewall. Where, how does that equate and add to a, the roof pitch?
Well, and.
Super tall roof pitch and the fourteen or sixteen doesn't.
It's, it's kind of a, it's, it's really, I guess, in my opinion, as a builder, I've been working in the Yankton area for Morton for almost fifteen years. It's a strange one, usually peak height is what comes into play in a lot of lake areas or in developments that I've worked in in other places, Iowa, Okoboji, Black Hills. Peak height is usually the concern. Because you can change the roof pitch and create, create a lot more of a disturbance.
Exactly.
You could take a building that's fourteen foot tall and do a ten, twelve roof pitch on, it's gonna be a lot taller than that.
That's what I was getting.
Yeah, so it's kind of a loose ordinance, I guess, from a builder's standpoint. The right person could find a way to get around that and it would still cause a problem for people. But you're a hundred percent right.
Well, it's a nice structure that we've got to figure out there.
Thank you.
So how's the access going to be to this new building then, through the primary driveway there of the residence or?
If you zoom in, there's already an access on the fifty.
Right there, yeah.
Okay.
Right there, it's just grown over with grass and weed right now, but it's actually established already.
Okay, so the front of the building would be facing right into that?
Yeah, so that view that we had up here just a minute ago with the, with the door and the porch and kind of everything, the, the bottom left view there, that's what you would see from highway fifty.
The house of Mary Shrain is just the left of the lots.
Yes, yep, yep, just on the other side of Lewis and Clark Trail.
Yeah.
Get any input or concerns from any neighbors or anything like that?
No, no one contacted us.
Have we reached out to any of the neighbors to talk about this?
Personally, no, we just sent letters and, and posted and everything about the.
I saw they had in the paper, but.
One thousand three hundred and twenty feet in a residential district, so there were a lot of them.
Yeah, there was, a lot of letters, yeah, I think there was fifty-nine, I think is what I sent out for letters, fifty-nine of them.
Serves as a question.
Yep, I think the only person we had was the person that came in and said they had an affidavit sent to them, I had a new secretary and I was on the road. Gave her instructions that did not quite go as I planned, but I doubled my postage, we'll put it that way, she filled everything with prepaid envelopes too, so. But anyway, nonetheless, sorry about that, but, but yeah, I was on the road and we were up against a deadline, so she did it, but other than that, I don't think we had anybody reach out and concerns. Any other questions?
Did you make a motion, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, did you want a discussion first?
I guess we can have a little bit of discussion, is there any other questions for Jason? All right, thanks Jason. All right, I guess I don't see anybody from the audience for any public comment. Any other board discussion, we do have a motion on the table.
Technically, it's a, it's a lot that you could build a three-story house on.
Interesting.
You could build a four-story house on that lot.
Yeah.
Thirty feet, at least.
Our houses aren't restricted, so they.
Oh.
So you could, you could pull, you could put a monster home on there if you wanted to.
How would that work if you build a house, a chouse, that looks like this, where you call it a house?
Well, if they've got covenants, then people that enforce the covenants would have to deal with it, otherwise.
But we don't deal with covenants.
What's that?
But we don't deal with covenants, so. How does that work with our ordinance, if they, if it was a chouse and they call it a house, then?
They need a permit.
Whatever.
That's, that's in the original Ed English development, right?
I'm sorry?
That's in original Ed English development?
That I'm not sure. That I'm not sure.
Pretty sure it is. Should be.
I'd be surprised if it didn't have covenants in that area, but.
They do have covenants, I know, we looked at buying my grandparents' house, they're pretty loose, but they do have some, but they're old. Well, they haven't been updated in a while, I guess, put it that way, so they do have some.
My biggest concern is, I wish that, as you listed the hardship, that you didn't list the hardship that it was, the building was already ordered.
That, that's.
That becomes a problem.
But we don't need a hardship.
We don't need a hardship because it's not a variance.
Yeah, but it's for conditional use, you know, when you're doing a variance, you have to have some kind of hardship as to why you're.
For variance? Yeah.
This isn't a variance, so it's conditional use.
Conditional use.
Yeah.
But you're, but you're asking to build a building that's taller than allowed in that district.
But we don't require a hardship for a conditional use permit.
But it's still, like I said, before you can approve the thing, you know, the building's already on its way and, and.
Well, there were people that have made that mistake before and they didn't get to build. So they had to sell the building or do something with it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cut all the posts off a little shorter.
I mean, to the north of that, there are a lot of trees too, that are probably in excess of thirty feet.
Yeah, I guess I don't see an issue, it doesn't look like it's gonna block anybody. Looks like a good spot for one.
Nice looking building.
Think it meets all of our requirements.
I, I don't, I, I can't think, I don't drive out there every year. But the last time I drove through, I don't remember another new house built in that development. They were almost totally built out.
Yeah, there's, there's not an open lot that I'm aware of, there, I looked for five years for land back there, I moved back home and I had helped them.
I would second Kettering's motion, Loost.
All right, I have a motion in a second, we can vote when you're ready, Bill. Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Next up would be the Heinz plat, plat of lots B forty-seven, B forty-eight of Farview Heights located in northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section thirteen, township ninety-three north. Range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Portions of lot B thirty-six and the south, one hundred and eight feet of lot B thirty-seven. Lot B forty-two, lot B forty-three in the south, thirty feet of lot B forty-one, which borders and is adjacent. Only to the north line of lot B forty-three, Farview Heights located in section thirteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM. Yankton County, South Dakota, recorded in book S three, Platts on page one hundred, containing two point three seven acres more or less zip cuff, so.
So yeah, these two lots are, these two lots. Just combining them into one.
Makes sense.
So two non-conforming going to one non-conforming?
Yes.
Okay.
There are a lot of non-conforming lots out in that area.
I just want to make sure, because when you, when you just pull this up and you look and it's moderate density and you've got a small lot, if you don't realize that it's original, just so folks understand.
Moderate density is one acre for minimum, so.
Correct.
It'd be conforming.
So it's, it's conforming now, yep, the B forty-eight is still non-conforming.
But the two that we're talking about, combining to make them conforming?
Yep. Two one conforming. Loost moves approval.
Michael, second.
All right, motion in a second, we can vote when you're ready, Bill. Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. All right, thanks guys. Let's see, we got all the Platts done, I believe. Yep. Now we can move to the discussion on the solar farms. Do you want to?
Yeah, sure, before we do that, is fourteen foot like not tall enough anymore?
Well, I, I think, in my opinion, it, what is the intent, because the sidewall is one thing. And then what the obstructed view is the ridge or the top of the roof. So your sidewall has some parts of it, but if you have a pitch that goes like that, three and twelve or whatever. That sidewall fourteen twelve, we're talking two feet of the way, doesn't, doesn't make a whole, doesn't really change it. It's like the guy from Morton Buildings was talking about, it, it's really the height of the, of the roof that should be if the intent is to have an unobstructed view.
Right, because I just, I think like out there, this is just, there's gonna be more and more building for their toy, you know, their campers and their boats and things like that. And it just seems like everything's getting bigger, you know, bigger boats, bigger campers, and that's what I was just wondering if, if a fourteen foot side, you know. You know, people need bigger to, to house the bigger stuff in it.
Don, do you remember, and Bill, you might too, because this was amended in May of twenty twenty. And at that time, it used to be a variance and it was moved into the CUP. And I know we added square footage, but I don't think.
We went up two foot per sidewall.
And we went up two foot, and that's where I was going, is I thought we did, so two years ago, we already went up two feet on the sidewall.
In all, in all the districts?
Yes, all three of them, because ag doesn't have a limit. But one, two, and three all went up.
So it was twelve foot?
Yes.
Yeah.
And twelve under forty.
Yeah, it was.
It doubled.
It was small, we, we.
Wow.
Made a pretty good change.
Yeah, come up all the time. And I guess it's come up multiple times already with the fourteen foot.
Yep.
And I think it doesn't really matter what we set it at, it's gonna keep.
Someone's always going to push the speed limit, right, five over?
If I remember correctly, two weeks, the next meeting after. If I remember correctly, two weeks, the next meeting after we approved the increase in footage, a person came in for a two-foot. Extension.
Increase.
But, yeah, I guess the intention is just to keep the size of the building down or for like obstruction of view. It really does make more sense to make it a peak height, and that would probably encompass more people, because if you were strict on the peak height. And you said the peak height would be twenty foot or whatever, if they needed a taller sidewall to get their boats in, they'd just make a flatter roof. But I don't know.
Well, and that, and that structure is a little different, because you have that secondary roof with the clear story windows, which is another sidewall.
Which is probably gonna be a man cave.
Right, so you're taking fourteen and then stacking another structure on top of it with other sidewalls, and then you get that peak. Which is twenty-two feet, so that's where I was kinda going with what, what was the intent there of the fourteen, because to me, it didn't, it didn't apply. It didn't make sense.
So is that something we wanna look at? Peak height? Instead of sidewall? Then we don't have to worry, you know?
I guess it's how many times we wanna address it.
Right.
In this room, but I guess if somebody did come up with, setting it at fourteen foot, if somebody did come up with something crazy. Where the peak is up there another fifteen, twenty feet above that sidewall, then we'd have something to say about it, but.
And, and in this instance, you know, with the hill, I, I, I think you could even go higher and it's not gonna obstruct someone else's view. So I didn't think that it was, regardless of the intent of the fourteen or twelve foot, I didn't think it was that much of an issue.
Right.
But like in that district down there, or in that area down there, I should say, not district, but in that area down there. Okay, so you, you approve it and you take it to a sixteen-foot sidewall. And somebody's gonna come in and decide that, well, I can build a six, a chouse, I'm gonna build that, but then I wanna put another level, another floor on top of it to live in. So then you, I mean, you almost need to just take the height requirement completely out of the ordinance, because we're not gonna have no.
Oh, yeah, we pretty much gotta have a limit somewhere, and then just leave it there, because yeah, like you said, otherwise it's just.
What, what, what'd happen if you'd leave it, the sidewall in fourteen, sixteen, whatever you wanna make it? And then make maximum four, four twelve, what's, uh, maximum roof?
You have to incorporate the two.
Yeah.
Or ridge height, max ridge height, one, one of the two, either sidewall plus pitch equals, you can figure that out, what that ridge is, or just straight up ridge. If, if your intent is to not have an obstructed view, I think.
I, I know some of the other ordinances, and I think it would be Minnehaha, Lincoln County area, because they have so much construction in the country. That they have a height limit of structures.
Yes.
Across the board, houses, buildings, everything, just as long as you're under this, you can build it if you meet the area. So that would be another approach, and that would address your four or five-story homes, um, things like that too. If you went with the maximum height structure.
Are you talking, sure, uh, the maximum height that they could build, is that the ridge, ridge peak?
Yeah, that would be.
The ridge peak height then, so then, basically, it would be all depending on the construction of the building as far as snow load and wind load and stuff like that. On the roof of the building, what it would have to.
Yep.
How it would have to be built in order to maintain, to get a higher sidewall, but not go over the height.
I can't remember when, but didn't we have a, a house in Oak Hills that they had to move? Because it was too tall.
Yeah, where you go up by Cottonwood Corral on that.
Yep.
They built it too tall, they had to take it down, or take it, move it, or whatever they did with it, but they, but that was, that was beyond us. That was the covenants for the thing that they actually enforced, which is a rarity out there also, so.
Is that in an HOA area?
But it, it blocked view and then it wasn't, didn't conform with the aesthetics of the area. You know, according to the covenant, it was like a big red, red stop sign out there. They made them move it. But that, that was even before zoning.
Well, the, the commission is looking at a task force to look at the county. And building. And, uh, if you, if you, uh, uh, listened, this Mr. Welsh has spoken. Uh, at the last thirty, thirty thing, and, uh, he's volunteered to be on that task force. And I think they're looking, we're looking at, if we do one, we'd probably get somebody from an electric, electric company, somebody from. BYUI Water. Try to figure out something in that lake area that. Works. And you don't have to have variances. But like anything, that'll take a while. Lots of here.
And it'll change overnight.
Yeah.
Alright, any more discussion on sidewall heights? Alright, Lauren, you wanna talk about the solar farms?
Yes, the reason, um, for this goes back, two weeks ago, I was out at plat for the pump storage, uh, public meeting, um, out there. I, Gregory County Pump Storage Project, and, um, about a hundred and fifty people from, uh, plat in that area. Pretty upset about what's happening out there, and just the frustration and just the helplessness that some of the people felt. And I, I came home feeling, you know, upset about that, and just, just, they felt helpless. You know, like, we can't do it, there's nothing we can do. And then, um, that, next Monday, I heard talk of a solar farm going on, going in over Clay County. Which got me thinking and, you know, about our county, and, and I don't, I just, I don't want, um. Us as a county and our county commissioners, sitting there feeling helpless. Because they didn't get on the ball and get the ball rolling before solar farm or before. You know, whoever comes in and wants to put something in. Um, I've, I, after, you know, learning about the solar farm, I did call the Clay, uh, County, um, zoning guy over there. I can't think of his first name, I don't know if he knows who it is. Um, he says, no, there's been inquiry about it, but nothing definite. Okay, but I do know that Clay County on the books for their next meeting, they're planning a zoning meeting. They do have a, uh, solar farm, um, draft ordinance that they're going to start talking about. So obviously, if they're thinking about putting one in over their county, uh, their planning and zoning, must mean that they're thinking it's, must be a pretty serious. Proposition coming, and so I just think it'd be important for us, um, you know, I don't know if it starts with us, if it starts with the commission. But just start the process of getting that on the books, so that if somebody does wanna come in, we have something in place to say, hey.
Was that one out of the plat?
The, what, the?
Solar farm.
No, it's not a solar farm, it's a pump storage project.
Oh, the pump storage.
Yeah, yeah, they've downsized it a little bit, um, but still, it's gonna affect, well, they're just, they're concerned about their tourism. You know, and how it's gonna affect the river, so, um, and also too, just looking at our wind, um, you know, driving back from Rapid City here a couple of weeks ago. Uh, driving past Trip in that area and looking at those, those wind farms, and there's, you know, one towers that are standing with two blades on them. There's one that has three blades, but the one blade is cracked, you know, and it's just standing there. And so, I mean, I just, I would just really like to have Yankton County be on the forefront of getting ahead of anything and not being reactive. Because I think that's the thing out at Gregory, out at plat, and it's Gregory County, is that it's, it's reactive. Same thing with the carbon, with the, the pipeline up in, in McPherson County, you know, they're reacting. You know, they didn't have anything in place, and all of a sudden, they have this pipeline going through their county, it's like, okay, what can we do to stop it? Now, let's learn from what's going on in our state right now, and let's, as a county, say, hey, let's be proactive and get some things on the books.
I was trying to find a picture, but, uh, a week or so ago, a friend of mine shared a, a post on Facebook. It was West River somewhere, and I was trying to find it, eleven hundred acres, they wrapped up for one solar farm. So.
I think it's out, it's in Pennington, it's on the east side of Pennington County.
Yes, there we go.
Yep, yep, yep.
And that doesn't. When it's in full use, it doesn't serve a huge number of people.
Which one, the?
The eleven hundred acres.
Yeah. Well, and the same thing like without, if they get this pump storage project done, that's not, it's not electricity that's for the people of that area. It'd be one thing if they're sitting there having their land taken away and their, you know, tourism probably impacted. If it was electricity that was going to be used for them, you know, in their area, but it's all being gone down to Mid-American and down to Nebraska. And then to some, you know, Kansas City and stuff, so. And I noticed, I, I looked through the book, I see there is wind farm, you know, we do have some rules for wind farms. Um, I don't know, when was that put in place? Do you know? I try, I mean.
Way before my time.
Which wind farm?
The wind farm, the, the rules.
Article twenty-six.
The solar, or, uh, wind farm ordinance.
That's, um, it's been in there a while, man.
Yeah, I'd say it makes a lot of sense. We have things in there for cell towers and wind farms, and then things probably need to be updated. But, I mean, a solar farm really isn't a whole lot different in use or impact it would have around the area. So I think it should probably be included in there too.
Gary and I were discussing this about a week ago too, that there was another place where they didn't have one huge wind, uh, solar farm. But they had a bunch of.
Small ones.
Small, you know, panels, little units spread out everywhere, so. And, and how are you gonna do it with residences too? Do you wanna address that? Because we've had a couple of people inquire about adding solar. And I, you know, if they put a panel on their roof, it's not gonna make a difference, but if they're gonna wanna move some panels in and set them. Like a little utility facility, you know, is that, are we gonna include that with our utility facilities?
I've been out like on the east coast and stuff, and where people have, they might have like two lots. And the one lot is the size of this room, and it's all full of solar panels, and then their house is sitting next to it, which. I don't know if that's something we need to address or not, but probably wouldn't be a bad thing to think about.
To me, one thing about it, and it, it goes back onto the wind towers, it goes back onto the solar thing, it goes back onto the telecommunications. Towers that we allow being built. I don't, I, I know that in the, in the tower thing, there's a thing in, there's a paragraph in there about if it's abandoned over ninety days, it has to be removed. And that someplace down the line, it goes, if the county decides that it's a, a nuisance or a health or safety issue. That the county can go in and tear it down and, and sell the scrap for whatever they can get out of it. But I think that in all the ordinances, it should be no different than a gravel pit. Where there has to be money set aside to cover it.
To reclaim it.
Back where it belongs, in case something happens. I know, I know of a tower that's not being used and they're fighting over it. But, but there's the wind farms, and then what I've read a couple of articles on the solar farms where they got in there. And, and put in a rather large facility, and then windstorm or tornadoes or whatever come and just. You know, destroy it, and it's scattered all over, and they just, everybody just leaves and leaves it there. I mean, the, the trash is still scattered all over, and it's not being taken care of, but, you know, that's something that, as we're moving forward. To addressing some of these things, we need to look at all of these things to be added in there somehow.
A long time ago, my brother and I were approached to put a wind farm up on some pasture ground. Closest farm to it was probably three to five miles away, I don't know for sure. In the contract, uh, they guaranteed that they would take it down when it was no longer used. But my brother was a lawyer, and, and I, I, I said, well, they'll just sell the company? Or declare bankruptcy of the company, and there that shit will sit?
Yep.
Isn't that what happened with the tower you're talking about, that somebody built it and then somebody leased it, and then they went out of business? And so nobody claims ownership and nobody wants to take it down, so.
Well, landlord wants to take it down.
Right, but he's not sure he has the authority, because he doesn't know who actually owns it, if anybody owns it.
Well, and that, you know, that particular one became an issue because they were provided with, because they allowed them to build it there. They provided free internet service for the life of, you know, the company. And when they pulled out and left them, they lost that too, and now they're sitting there with a tower standing on their property, so.
Well, a lot of that arguments always revolve around landowner rights, and that's just really a tough issue.
Mm-hmm. Well, and like you said, Don, about the, the, the wind farm thing, you know, if they file bankruptcy, it's no different than an insurance company. They can guarantee your premium's gonna stay the same forever until they go bankrupt, and then it's not gonna stay the same anymore. So, I mean, it, it's hard to write rules and look far enough into the future as to what, what can or will happen. But, um, at least if you put, put it in black and white someplace, at least you have something to point to when the time comes.
You know, so as it stands today, if someone came in and wanted to put a solar farm in, for lack of a better word. It would fall under utility facilities, it's a definition that was amended in twenty twenty-one. And that definition reads, any above-ground structures or facilities other than buildings. Unless such buildings are used as storage incidental to the operation of such structures or facilities. Owned by a government entity, a nonprofit organization, a corporation, a private citizen. Or any entity defined as a public utility for any purpose. And used in connection with the production, generation, transmission, delivery, collection. Or storage of water, sewage, electricity, gas, oil, or electronic signals. So that's the definition of it. The only thing we have, um, to further that is we have a wind ordinance. And we have telecommunications. So I have solar, I solar on a building, and if we expand solar, we will probably put it on the ground. The only reason is, I'm in my fifties, my husband's in his fifties. And when those things need to be replaced, it is easier to do when they're on the ground. So today, if I would want to double our solar capacity, which we have thirty-six panels on the side of a building, I could do it. It's a permitted use in Ag, R one, R two, and R three. So if you're living on a half, pardon?
End rule development.
Yeah, uh, you know, I didn't look at RT.
I actually think utility facilities are allowed in every.
I'm pretty sure they are.
Every, uh.
Yeah, I didn't look at RT, but every, everything there, so if I was in R three, I was on a half-acre lot, I could put solar panels in, permitted. So that's kinda where it stands today, but I would suggest everybody probably review the wind. I know when I was on the commission, that was one of our intents, was to review that wind ordinance, and we never got to it. It was one of Joe Healy's big things, he wanted to review that wind ordinance, so it's probably wise we do that. And I would suggest we all get a copy of whatever Clay County's doing, because if they're our neighbor, sometimes it's good to have consistency in areas and such.
But there, we've had several people come in and ask, apparently, there's been a lot of discussion northeast part of the county. Uh, I think maybe they've even talked to landowners, if there's anything going on, and of course, we haven't had anything official come in. But there's, there are companies looking at it.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money out there right now at the federal level.
Sure, in, in our definition, I think the only, the only group that was missed, that when you read that, was the Chinese.
Oh. Oh, the foreign, well, they would be a, uh, a government entity, they would be a government entity. So, or a corporation, if they were masking.
If you're zoned, zoned Ag, you could put up a farm?
Right now, you could, a solar farm, right now, you can put them up.
Zoned Ag, and you've got panels, so what would stop?
You could put them up anywhere right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Highway fifty-two, they could, I don't know if the corridor really addresses it, but any business along there could decide they wanna run on solar and.
Okay, so, I, I, I think we're legitimately gonna try to get this task force going fairly soon. It would be good for at least one person on this, uh, from this group to be on. So think about that, and if you're interested, I'd gladly forward your name.
I was gonna say, with, with, uh, with the wind, if you look at like the, the, the strictest county out there that has for wind farms. I mean, we're, and then I looked at Clay County's, and theirs is pretty loosey-goosey as far as wind. We're somewhere in between, you know, where we're at, but just, and I, I did look at it, and there's, I mean, technology's changed, things have changed. You know, and I think that does. You know, and I think that does need to be looked at and, and, um, you know, the wind, I agree.
Well, maybe we don't have enough, uh, sun to have a solar, or solar farm, I don't know.
It never seems to rain.
You know, we've, we've gotten letters from companies, cause we have a electrical tower that goes through one of our fields over, um, east of the Jim River and we've had, um, companies that have sent letters saying, hey, would you be interested in, cause it'd be great, because you've got the power lines right there. But what's interesting is those power lines don't go back towards my farm, you know.
If you're serving anything bigger than your home, the issue is in, in the distribution system that the power grid has.
Yep.
I think Sherry was, said it best, there's a lot of money out there, so they'll put them up regardless.
So I, I work for McCarthy Building Companies and we, we build these all over the US. And so I, I would be opposed in my backyard and I would be opposed in Yankton County. It's, you just don't wanna see that, in my opinion, personal opinion. But my, my company builds them all over the US.
Solar?
Solar, yeah.
My sister has her own personal one on the south side, she lives down in Kansas, it's pretty big, it's pretty big.
There're thousands of acres.
Yeah, but like she said, they push electricity out in the summertime like you would not believe, but this past winter, as long as it was and it has, you know, dark, she says they did not produce nothing. So it was, yeah, they paid a lot this winter for electrics, for their electricity.
They flourish in, in the southern United States, Texas is, we have a lot of work in Texas, Arizona, et cetera, for, because of the, the heating days.
Go down to, I was down at Twenty-Nine Palms, California
They're everywhere.
in February.
And, and there's, there's, so it's coming, you know, it's, it's definitely coming, um, because there's a ton of federal dollars that are being piped into, you know, every local, state.
It's two years to the next one, right?
So what's the process for doing this? How do you change the bible here?
I, I, I would suggest that it, it would be part of this overall project.
Land use task force?
Now, with, you know, if, if there's a lot of enthusiasm about getting it addressed immediately, that there's a procedure that we can follow and get it done. I don't know if that's what, what we want. But whoever joins into the task force needs to bring that to the task force's attention.
Yeah, I guess, as far as these different things getting addressed as like amendments, if it was things that could be addressed fairly quickly, like, I don't know, I feel like sidewall height thing isn't really that big a deal, if we wanted to change something, we could go through the amendment process pretty quickly with that, but on something like solar and wind facilities or like building codes or whatever in the lake area, that stuff probably should be more thought out than being just
Well, you're gonna have hearings, you're gonna have hearings.
Right.
Well, how, when you, when the, when the KFOs and all that was going on, how did you, how, how did that process start? Who, what was the, where did that all originate and where did it start and who started it and, cause I just got on the tail end of it coming to the planning and zoning and then the commission meeting, so I don't know where it started.
There was a, a great deal of back and forth between the planning commission and the county commission. Um, an original draft was put toward the county commission, it was sent back with suggestions and then it went back to the, the county commission, so it, it was a very long, it was a year and a half, did we spend on that, Don, something like that, it was very long. That was because we waited until there was controversy.
Right.
Your suggestion is to not wait until there's controversy, so it would be a lot smoother, but I do think that some, um, approval at the commission level before any big legwork would be done here is needed. Because there's no sense us putting legwork in, it gets there and they say, well, we don't need a solar ordinance. And then it's, it's wasted time, so.
I'll meet tomorrow with, with Gary on, on this task force thing and I think we're gonna put together some ideas to go to the commission.
Try to put it on the next, the next agenda for the county commission? Okay.
Well, and Sherry, I think too that part of the, the KFO thing was a sense of urgency at the time. I mean, that was it and, and I think I agree with what Lauren is talking about on the solar things and all these other things is we don't wanna wait for the urgency to hit, we wanna kinda be ahead of it. Like you said with, like, Minion County and, and I know she was mentioned earlier when we were visiting about Cherry County in Nebraska and their wind farm stuff and some of these counties that maybe have already got some of this going on in their counties and what they are doing or what they wish they would have done before they allowed it to happen, you know, that's you know, it's, it's good to not reinvent the wheel if we can help it.
I was just gonna say, you know, why reinvent the wheel? And plus, like you said, there's so many counties that are dealing with it and with the wind and not, you know, solar, to be able to, like you said, to talk to them and say, hey, what do you like about your ordinances? What do you not like about them? What should we do differently? You know, learn from what people have already done. And so that we can make ours better, because then someday down the road, maybe somebody will come to us and say, hey, we need to put this in. What are your thoughts, so?
Well, I'll bring up the, the fact tomorrow with Gary in our, in our meeting and that we, we really believe things need to move forward on wind and solar.
So you're thinking about putting the wind and solar with this task force?
Unless it's need to be done.
Separately?
Separately and sooner.
Okay.
But it, it, you know, you, you, the problem is, we don't have a community of thirty thou- or twenty-three thousand people that, that agree on much.
Anything?
Well, yeah, yeah, I wish we would agree on more things, cause we got one of the best counties location-wise, facilities, uh, you know, I just was, if you live in the city and wanna go to theaters and stuff, you wouldn't agree with this. We've, we've got great things here, we just need to protect it and we need to stimulate it economically.
And that's a delicate balance.
Yeah.
No, I agree with you.
I just think that with a task force, you know, if you're looking at the lake area, electricity, water and everything, that's a great goal or a great, you know, commission, you know, what I wanna say for that task force? I think throwing solar and wind in, it would be too much. Because, yeah, cause I just, I, you know, you, you talk to people and the first thing that comes up to them is the lake area. You know, and we've seen it at the commission meetings too.
Well, I, I would tell you that there's some landowners in the county that would not be opposed to having a, uh, residential area in their area. And we should be addressing that.
Yep.
What they have to do. And how it gets done. Infrastructure. Need to get a big picture put together.
We had that discussion a long time ago, Don, when this ordinance was being built about being able to, for somebody that had land along the Jim River or land here or land there where there was some little aesthetic thing that made everybody think that they needed to build a house there and that they shouldn't be not, denied building that house there. And I think I brought the comment up, yeah, but what about the people that live next to it that are farming yet and that don't want that traffic and all that?
I'm gonna give you an example of that right now. We signed, uh, a letter encouraging a grant for a project called Raise. And it's between Vermilion and Yankton and it's to make a, a bike walking trail from here to there and some fingers out from, from it, uh, like to go up to Gable or, you know, those kinda things. What farmer lives along there is number one, gonna want people riding bikes adjacent to his cattle or hogs or pigs or, you know, would want that? I just, then the other side of it is, I'm sure they all seen what happens when you start building million dollar homes on the river. That price, price of that lot just goes.
Well, and did they ever develop the, the train track? That was supposed to, that's what that was supposed to be, the one from here to Irene, that, you know, to open that up, but that ends up going through pastures and people's livestock things and people's yards and it's a very scenic route if you, if you know it.
Yeah, go down to Texas and talk to them about the Mexicans and
Yeah.
Hondurans walking through their fields and breaking their shit up.
That's not happening, no, not at all.
Okay, well, I'll talk with them tomorrow, I, I give them both of your ideas.
I think we should have it on the agenda, address next time exactly kinda what direction we're gonna go, whether we're gonna try and lump everything together into like a task force or make a decision, we're gonna try and piece some of this out, address it quicker. So that we kinda have a direction to go, so we're not just sitting here meeting after meeting and and don't have direction, but.
I think it'd be better to keep it separate. Because what's, you know, your task force thing is, that's a huge scope already. And adding on wind and solar is just, it's gonna bog things down.
Cause somebody that wants to vote against wind may not vote against solar, but if you have them all in the same pot, they'll all join together and vote against it. Best we can do is try.
Yep.
Put it out there. I think it's a great idea that we, we do it upfront.
And speaking of changes, like last time, we talked about the existing farmstead exemptions. Did you guys do anything with that or work on any rewording or anything?
Well, we're doing that at the same time, we're working on the rural transitional.
Okay, so this task force is mainly to address like the rural transitional and like the lake area with all the
And I think it was just land use
Just land use in general?
in the lake area to protect it.
All right, um, any other board discussion? Otherwise, I don't see any public comment, unless you got a letter.
Nope, make a motion to adjourn.
Second, lost.
All right, motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, we are adjourned.
If you want to write down my numbers, six oh five, six six zero, four three zero three. And it could be a very long process.
I thought you were gonna say eight, six, seven, five, seven, nine?
Pump storage, like, how are they doing now?
Um, they're pumping, they're gonna suck water out of the Missouri River, right there south of, um, half a mile from the bridge.
Correct, bridge.